Good afternoon. We'll bring the May 20th, 2019 Salina City Commission meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. We will start with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019 is Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Salina. Shane Pearson, EMS chief, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Appreciate it. To designate the week of May 19th, uh, of May 19th through 25th, 2019 is Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training to continue, in continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, I, Trent Davis, MD, Mayor of Salina, Kansas, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the, with the theme EMS Strong, Stronger Together, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you. Before you come and get this, I don't know if folks realize to what extent EMS services in this city truly have it down to a science. I mean, these are some of my favorite guys to see show up. It's bad when you have to show up. But they really know what to do. When you talk about that save rate, they are well above national average as far as returning people. Actually, better than they found them. You already have the most popular phone number in town, so is there anything else you're doing to advertise this week?
Well, yeah, we actually, we had a few things planned. We've got a representative from Zoll Medical who's here this week teaching us some new things that are, that involve cardiac arrest survival and, and trying to stay abreast of newest technology, however, with the weather as it is and the impending predictions for tomorrow, the, some of those things may be put on hold for us to actually go do what we're here every day to do, so.
But to get a chance to practice that high water, rapid water rescue.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Please come forward and share this with your team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And 3.2.
Item 3.2, the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019 is National Public Works Week in the city of Salina. Leanne Johnson, Administrative Assistant III, will read the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, stormwater and levee systems, solid waste collection and disposal operations, municipal fleet maintenance services, water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, engineering and inspection, public facilities. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and facilities each and every day, as well as in times of emergency and community disaster. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, MD, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 20th day of May, 2019. Trent W. Davis, MD, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, you all are the true unsung heroes of the, of the city. I don't think we could imagine living here without what, what you do. I'm a personal fan of indoor plumbing and running water, so. Coming in the house and leaving the house. Are there any ways to glorify what you do this week or this month?
Um, well, we did send out a news release to let the citizens know that this is a National Public Works Week. And just kind of in line with that, that the theme is, it starts here. We're also doing an employee appreciation for the public works department on Thursday over at the General Services Building at noon, so we will be recognizing the employees and all the good work that they do here.
It'd be, you know, your profession and careers is a, is one that our high school students probably don't hear about often enough, the lots of different opportunities in public works.
Absolutely.
So I have to advertise you a little more often. I'm gonna give you the signed proclamation. And 3.3, thank you.
Item 3.3, the day of June 7th, 2019, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Salina. Mona Hargrave, Moms Demand Action, social media lead, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Somebody short was here before me. This is perfect. Whereas, the first Friday in June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas, mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas, in January 2013, Hydeah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed by gang members in Chicago. And whereas, to help honor Hydeah, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7th, 2019, the first Friday in June, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The idea was inspired by a group of Hydeah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate, commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 7th, 2019, Americans can join this campaign to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, MD, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2019, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Salina and encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 20th day of May, 2019.
Thank you. Are there any rallies or programs or celebrations that day?
Yes, there, not that day, but on June 8th, Saturday, June 8th, down at Astra, will be Wear Orange Day. And so you can come down, wear orange, have a cup of coffee, and that'll be from two to four, two to four.
Thank you. We will now move to the Citizens Forum. Opportunity for anyone to address the commission on an item that's not on the agenda. And like you to limit your comments to five minutes. Everyone's here for a reason. Okay, good. We will move on to public hearings.
Item 5.1, petition number 4396 filed by Michael MacArthur, 214 Greenway Road. 5.1A, consider acceptance of an offered utility easement dedication from Michael MacArthur in the replat of Block 3 of Country Club Heights addition. And 5.1B, public hearing and report on petition number 4396 requesting the vacation of an eight-foot-wide north-south utility easement, four foot either side of the common lot line between Lot 7 and 8, Block 3, Country Club Heights addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, located on property addressed as 214 Greenway Road.
Thank you. So we will now continue the public hearing that was started on May 6th. Mr. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, a public hearing on this item was opened on May 6th. At that hearing, petition number 4396 filed by Mark, Michael MacArthur, was presented requesting approval of the vacation of an eight-foot north-south utility easement that runs through his rear yard at 214 Greenway. And the block in question is displayed on the screen there, and that block has a series of utility easements that, that go through the, the back of the lots there. At that meeting, we informed the commission that Kansas Gas Services had registered an objection to the vacation request stating that they needed that easement to complete a gas line replacement project they were doing on that block. Staff presented a request from Mr. MacArthur to continue the hearing, to allow him to continue discussions with Kansas Gas about possible alternatives. And Kansas Gas expressed an openness to consider those alternatives. And Mr. MacArthur has agreed to dedicate a new replacement easement that abuts his rear lot line in exchange for Kansas Gas dropping their objection to vacation of the existing easement. So it's, it's difficult to see, but the, the gas, the easement as it is now kind of goes through the yard area, and it's being shifted over to the west so that the new easement will directly abut the west property line. So we have the easement exhibit and description. The easement has been executed by Mr. MacArthur, and it's in order for your consideration. So your options would be to accept the easement on behalf of the city or to decline to accept the new easement, which would leave the existing easement in place. Our recommendation would be to accept the offered public utility easement dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the document on behalf of the city. With that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the replacement easement.
Any questions, Mr. Andrew? Have none? Any questions or comments from the public? We are now ready for action on 1B.
Mayor Davis, I move.
I'm sorry, 5.
5.1A. Okay.
Not sure where I got that letter from.
I move that we accept the offered utility easement dedication from Michael MacArthur in the replat of Block 3 of the Country Club Heights addition.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to nothing. Do you want to speak again or?
This is a two-part action now that you've accepted the replacement easement. That has satisfied Kansas Gas Services concerns, and they have indicated that as long as they get a copy of the executed easement for their records, that they have no objection to the replacement easement. So your options would be to, if you agree that no private rights will be injured by the utility easement vacation, the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience. If this is vacated, you could approve the attached ordinance 1911001 vacating the existing easement on first reading. You could also postpone this item if you feel like you need additional information, or you could deny Mr. MacArthur's petition if you find it's not in the public interest to vacate the existing easement. Our recommendation would be that now that you've accepted the replacement easement, to approve the ordinance vacating the existing north-south easement on first reading.
Any questions?
Did we receive written notice from them as to their acceptance of this?
I have an email from Tommy Adamson at Kansas Gas Service saying that they would accept the replacement easement in lieu of the current one.
Any public comment before we close the hearing? Okay, close the hearing and bring us back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 1911001 vacating the existing easement on first reading.
Second. Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-11001. This is on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 13th, 2019.
Does anyone have any concerns about the minutes? Nope, if not, uh.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Right, any public comment? Nope. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, which is basically our minutes of our last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, resolution number 19-7710 authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with North Salina Community Development Incorporated to allow the placement, use, and maintenance of little libraries at specific locations in the public right-of-way.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This resolution 1977-10, or, -7710 is a license agreement between the city of Salina and North Salina Community Development Incorporated, which will allow the installation of small concrete pads and refurbished newspaper racks at nine additional locations on city right-of-way as a community, neighborhood book exchange known as Little Libraries. Eight of these locations are adjacent to bus stops with one additional location at the drive-through recycling center. Last year, you passed a similar resolution allowing for five locations. They were selected by the North Salina Community Development. Private contractor-installed pads were needed to city standards, and they have had a lot of success with those. North Salina Community Development has done a lot of positive things in North Salina, and they are proposing actually 10 more locations throughout the city, not just limited to North Salina. The 10 libraries include one at the Save-A-Lot store, which is on private property, nine locations on city property, with eight of those being at bus stops and one next to the drive-through recycling center. OCCK has reviewed the proposed locations for the little libraries adjacent to the bus stops and did not object to any of those. The attached license agreement was modified to include the five original, as well as the nine additional, for a total of 14 little libraries to benefit the public. It does include responsibilities of the owner and their successors for maintenance and the possible need to remove or relocate the libraries in the future. And the concrete pads will be installed per city standards and will be inspected by our staff. This item does, is consistent with the shared vision of the city. The city will be a place for quality of life that not only appeals to residents but also visitors. The city of Salina will be attractive and well-maintained. It will be evident that all housekeeping and high community standards are valued, and Salina will be supported of lifelong learning through all forms of education, including elementary and secondary education, higher education, vocational and technical training. It is also consistent with a couple of the city goals to provide the highest quality services, consistent with the governing body direction available for resources and staff commitment to quality. And the city will work to make Salina a city that's connectivity, connectivity physically and socially. North Salina Community Development will bear the costs associated with the installation of the concrete pads, the renovation of the newspaper racks, and the circulation of the books. They have received a grant of $3,542 from GL Hewitt in Minneapolis, Kansas, to refurbish the, the newspaper racks, including powder coating, Lexan insert, and vinyl standards. There are representatives from North Salina Community Development. Barb Young's here if you have any questions or would like any of the metrics on the, the activity within the program. We have identified the following options for the commission to approve the resolution 197710 authorizing the mayor to sign a license agreement with North Salina Community Development authorizing placement of the little libraries within the public right-of-way inside the city limits at the locations specified in the agreement. To do the same with amendments or to not approve resolution 1977-10. So we will stand for questions or anything else you'd like to know about this item.
You know, I, these are fantastic. I'm really happy to see you guys doing this. I mean, it's a, I think it's a really good service, and I thank you guys very much.
I do have one question is, where can individuals donate if they would like to donate books to the, to the libraries? And also, approximately how many books you have that are going throughout the community through this program?
Okay, the, if you want to donate books, you can actually.
Give your name to the clerk, please.
What's that?
Could you give your name to the clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're, you know who I am.
I know.
I'm Barb Young, North Salina Community Development, and own Triad Manufacturing, and kind of the pickup squad for whatever happens in North Salina. Love it here at West Grand. Is there anything else I, okay. You can donate books at the little libraries or Waddles, I'll give them a shout-out. Waddles Heating and Cooling has donated some of their warehouse space that you can drop off books or pick off books, pick up books as donations. And we've had pretty good success. About 30 books a month go out from each one. We've had a push for kids' books like at Christmas time, and it's been very successful. So we hope to expand this, and Optimus and Altrusa Club are also partnering with us, so it's, it's become pretty successful.
Thank you. I agree. Great, great program.
How many little libraries are around? How many of those installations are there amongst the, all the different groups?
They're, I mean, they're basically repurposed Salina journal racks that have been powder-coated to match the bus stops. They've got, I don't know, if you sent, had pictures with them this time, they have the, the vinyl lettering on them. We have Lexan. We had one that was damaged, but we replaced it with Lexan, so it makes it a little bit harder to kick out. So we're hoping that'll take care of that. Smoky Hill Construction has installed the concrete and bolted the little libraries down, done everything, labor and materials free of charge, which is huge for us, makes our grant dollars go further. And GL Hewitt gave us the $3,500 grant for these latest ones. So it's been a.
Are you aware of any other groups, Barb, that are doing libraries?
Um, the public library has a few. And Altrusa has some inside like laundromats and some, one in Assyria, and I believe one at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So there's two or three groups. What we're hoping to do is do a master list, so people will know where everything, all of them are at it, so you could take a book or donate, whatever you want to do. They're all a little bit different. Ours are the newspaper racks, some of them are on poles, some are little crates inside buildings.
The hope is to integrate all of that.
The hope is to integrate all of that service? I mean, doesn't matter whether you're getting them from a crate or a newspaper stand, they'll all...
We're trying not to overlap. I mean, we're trying to, you know, cover areas so we don't have duplication, but we're all trying to do it, stay on the same page, so we aren't running over each other or whatever. But there's still, there's plenty of books to go around. We've got lots of books, I'm sure there'll be more, so we're just hoping just to keep them in circulation tonight. And Jim came up with the idea at the recycling center, because I guess people were throwing books out, so some of those books can go in the rack there at the news, at the recycling center. I get perfectly decent books, if I understand. So we figure that's one way to keep some of them in circulation.
No, there were several customers that actually requested someplace they could take them rather than dispose of them.
Right. So, that's, that's it.
Well, as usual, you've done an excellent job. You make it look, you make it look so easy, bringing all those different groups together to donate their services and to create something really important in the community. So thank you very much for that.
It's, oh, thank you. It's neat. Everyone's pretty enthusiastic about it, so it, that makes it a lot easier. Thanks.
Thank you, Barb. Any comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mayor Davis, I move we approve resolution number 19-7710, authorizing the mayor to sign a license agreement with North Salina Community Development, Inc., authorizing placement of the little libraries within public right-of-way inside the city limits at the locations specified in the agreement.
Second.
It's moved in second to approve resolution 19-7710. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. 7.2.
Item 7.2, resolution number 19-7712, authorizing the mayor to execute a grant of permanent easement for road and bridge right-of-way to the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, for West Waterwell Road, and a related memo of understanding granting a temporary construction easement.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As I'm sure you recall, we recently executed an agreement with Saline County about road maintenance and responsibility and funding by way of landfill fees, and a provision of that agreement pertained to the perimeter roads that surround the landfill. We have a one-square-mile area in the county that is the landfill. So water, at the time, the county had indicated their intention to improve Waterwell Road and the need to expand the footprint of that road to account for those improvements, and negotiated into the agreement a provision that we would work with them on dedicating the necessary easement. So the specific language within that agreement provides that the county agrees to continue to maintain the width of the roads surrounding the landfill, Burma, Farley, Lightwell, and Lightville, and Waterwell, as they bound the perimeter of the landfill, and the city acknowledges that the county may require additional right-of-way improvements to West Waterwell Road. And as the owner of the property south of the center line of Waterwell Road, the city agrees to transfer right-of-way, not to exceed 20 feet in width, to the county upon notification from the county and at no cost to the county. They're ready to start that project and have provided us the notice contemplated in the agreement, and so this action item is essentially to grant an easement to provide for their waterwell road work as anticipated as part of the agreement. So at this point, they're in need of the easement itself, the need for a temporary construction easement is just a temporary width in excess of the permanent easement as the road's being constructed. The Public Works Department's confirmed that there's no obstructions in terms of our operations, this would not be a hindrance in terms of what we do, and the county engineer and the county counselor have approved the proposed permanent easement, and they're, due to the contractual nature of the county's commitment, the form of the easement calls for the county's acknowledgement of its acceptance as well, which would take place following your authorization. So it's consistent with our strategic plan in many ways, in terms of being clean, attractive, inviting, and providing a place with a quality of life, being attractive and well-maintained, and balancing expectations of community growth and providing high-quality services. As far as the fiscal note, there's no expense to the city directly or indirectly related to this, so the options we've identified for your consideration are to approve the resolution as proposed. You can approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate, and we might need to work with you in terms of any of those amendments and compliance with the agreement with the county. You can postpone consideration, or you can vote to deny, which would leave us in non-compliance with the agreement we previously entered into. Staff recommends option number one, which is approving the resolution, and be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the left or the right?
I just, I had, I had one question, something that I didn't see in the documents was, I know we'd had a conversation at some point about existing utility lines running under some county roads, and, I mean, is that, do we not address that at this point? Or...
I'm not sure. One of the conversations we had was our need for, to extend utilities from the water plant site.
Right.
Which is on the east end of Waterwell, which we were able to address that by way of the annexation arrangements that we made.
Okay, okay.
But as far as reviewing this location, I think there may have been conversation about it, just confirming there is no utilities or anything that might be impacted by this easement dedication, and we've since confirmed that's not the case.
Okay, all right. So all that was taken care of in the annexation agreement?
Yes, our need for utilities in their roadways was addressed in the annexation item.
Any comments from the public? See, County Chair Fidgerson is here. Just extend you the opportunity if you wanted to, you don't have to. Thank you. In that case, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve resolution number 19-7712.
Is there a second? Okay. It's moved in second to approve resolution 19-7712. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We see development business, we have none, and other business? Any other personal, other business? Any of the commissioners?
The only thing I would ask again is, a few weeks ago, brought up the Centennial Park issue, and just was wondering if staff was still looking into that, is to keep that on track.
We are, staff, independent of me, has been working on that, and then we had a status update meeting where we kind of reviewed next steps, and so we're putting together a game plan. One of the things I would tell you is, we reviewed the statute that applies in this particular instance to park property, and so there's some provision that, and this is a little detailed and mechanical, but there's a provision that when park property is proposed to be sold, transferred, and there's another adjective, but it basically changed hands, that the city has an obligation to publish notice in the paper, and that then creates, starts a clock on a protest petition opportunity. And so there's a 30-day period for that. In the event that the protest petition is successful, then the city commission would be tasked with deciding whether you want to go forward, and if so, putting that as a ballot issue to be voted on by the community at large. So what we've tried to do is look at that timeline and the steps that might need to play out in terms of what decision we would have to make, and we're still kind of sorting through whether we need to have the details of the transfer or some actual formal transfer to start that petition clock. On the assumption that we do, and then we publish notice, 30 days runs, then we have to go to the next step, which is proposing it for ballot issue if the petition is successful. That then becomes kind of the typical process to put a ballot issue on an upcoming ballot date. And so staff's still sorting through all that. That all presumes that we've done something in the way of a request for proposal and have a project and something that you wish to proceed with. So I think we've got quite a timeline to kind of flesh out. Staff in the meantime is working through kind of the details of what we would bring back to you in terms of an RFP process and propose to you an approach to kind of solicit interest in the Centennial Park site. So got multiple things going on there timewise. If you account for all that, it looks like it may take a little bit.
Would we have to have an...
Sorry, I was going to tell you, from looking at a synopsis where you take the state's requirements and our local requirements for disposal of land, we end up, by the time you do all the noticing, like two and a half to three and a half months to kind of jump through all the hoops, because we have our own set of requirements, talk about going in front of the Planning Commission or the Parks and Rec Board, and then we have to do news releases, and then we have to come in front of you guys, and you make a decision whether you do or don't want a resolution, and then that goes to the next meeting in which you act on a resolution, and then that moves things into motion, and then they have to be noticed, and then there's a 30-day petition period. So by the time you add all those pieces up with deadlines and meetings, you're on it about two and a half to three and a half months.
So do we feel like if we can get that done, so if it did get petitioned, we could get it on the ballot in November?
I don't know what date, I sent an email upstairs to see if I could get this answer by now, but I don't know what our cutoff date is with the county to be able to get something on the ballot. I will ask, I hope this isn't too out of line, for some clarification, we have a lot of people calling the office on this issue, and I guess what I'm trying to be able to explain to them is, are you asking us to bring you a proposal for an RFP process in which you guys would decide whether you do or don't want to do this, or are we bringing you an RFP process because we are doing this?
And that's a good question as to how we wish to proceed. You know, we discussed this, you know, several weeks ago, and I think everybody was interested in looking at doing something with that as far as for some affordable housing, workforce housing. Do we have to have an RFP? Can it be transferred to like the Chodo or something, and then the RFP be done? I mean, I guess that's the question.
The way I interpreted your prior direction was for staff to bring back to you what an RFP process might look like. So as we staff this through, I stopped short of saying, let's prepare the RFP and distribute it, because the detail of what you're requesting and what proposals you might entertain would go into that RFP, and we would want to be on the same page with you before we distribute that RFP. So what Lauren's talking about is more generic in terms of, we're going to have to have a conversation with you about possibilities, whether that's affordable housing, whether, you know, the housing study itself specifies kind of a configuration in a housing product. Another alternative would be to work with the Chodo and not exercise as much oversight at a level of detail in terms of the proposals we want and the basis on which we award the proposal, I guess you'd say the proposal or the final determination.
Again, I don't know how we go about that RFP. I mean, I have, I have something pictured, but it may be different than the other four individuals up here, so I don't know how we come to that consensus, or if you bring us something and we say you're on track or you're not. I mean, I hate for staff to wait, to spend time on something that doesn't meet what the commission's looking for, I guess.
Right. Our efforts so far have been more just, if we did an RFP process and we involved the neighborhood and we had, you know, community input, what that would look like without fleshing out the details of a proposal. When we're, and this is just kind of my vision, whether it's this property or otherwise, if we have an asset that we're willing to kind of creatively entertain disposing of that, that's our opportunity to specify under what conditions, what our expectations might be, rather than, you could go about it one of two ways. You could articulate some expectations so that that's on the front end, or you could just have an open-ended solicitation of proposals and entertain what might come to you when you receive it. I think we have an opportunity to kind of control our vision, if that's the intention.
I mean, my vision was either single-family or duplexes, you know, a certain size that matches the neighborhood, you know, that type of thing, and I don't, so I don't know how we would get to something like that.
So one of the things I might suggest is, this is a property with some history and a lot of feedback. There's been two or three different attempts at this, and there are a lot of different things happening in town right now, whether it's the Housing Authority or the Chodo, that have some different moving pieces that I think we could try and make November, and my job is to do what you asked me to do, so we could make that happen, but I do think it's worth looking at some of the timing to see if not only a transfer, but are there developers out there, and this is the kind of thing to consider in the RFP, who could maybe improve the park if you looked at different types of housing? I do think the type of housing is pretty critical in this project. Single-family versus duplex versus owner-occupied versus rental has different connotations for different people, and those are some of the phone calls that we're getting.
Yeah, you had mentioned the phone calls. I think I've gotten one email about it, but what kinds of feedback are you getting? Are you getting concerns from the neighbors? Are you getting concerned or developers who are excited at the opportunity? Or what kinds of feedback are you getting at this point?
A little bit of both. I've gotten two or three developers that have called, and I've gotten calls from the neighborhood, and that's not surprising. Usually my take on this kind of thing is to be as transparent and as overly communicative as possible. I mean, something that we've talked about, not knowing what your timeline was when you asked a couple of weeks ago, was to maybe establish some kind of base informational spot on the website, because I think it's pretty easy for this to kind of spin out of control, and we were just trying to let people know, like, here, we're going to develop an RFP proposal, or not necessarily a proposal, but an outline of what that could look like, maybe what those details and questions you guys would need to answer for us, and then from there, it becomes a project essentially. And then we start saying, well, this is how much time it takes to draft that, and then this is how much time to put it out to bid, and then this is how, you know, all these pieces start to lay out, so that they're able to kind of follow along the way, because the phone calls we were getting were, so is this happening? Are you building something today? And it was like, no, no, not building anything today, not even sure if we're building anything. Our job was to figure out if the city commission may want to do that.
And I have, my concern is, you know, I don't want to rush this, I want us to do it correctly, but my concern is, is if we miss this window, because if it does get petitioned, which to me, it's a benefit to the neighborhood if you're building quality homes and that, it actually increases the value of that neighborhood, and again, I see them being owner-occupied, at least initially. I mean, I'm not sure you can control that forever, but if it would get petitioned and have to go to the ballot, I don't, you know, I don't see us doing a spatial ballot for something like this because of the cost, so that's why I see us trying to get to a point where if it does have to go on a ballot, it would go on this November's ballot.
And I guess I got a question too, because I've been approached by a couple. There was a Mr. Divalbliss that approached Mayor Davis and I one day and was asking about the project, and I guess maybe staff could clear up a, he was telling us that there was a petition out there that had been filed with the city to where they could not use this land to be built on, it was supposed to be used for parkland and be expanded into parkland instead of putting, now that's...
Well, backing up a step, and staff's welcome to, correct me if I get this wrong, but the statute that I referenced earlier had provided a petition, it provides a petition process if parkland is being transferred. And so this topic came up, and I don't have the paperwork with me, but in the 80s or 90s?
No, I want to think, I want to say the petition was in the early 2000s. It's like, it was like eight, late 80s, like 1993, I want to say like 2010, like there's a history of this property being looked at.
So there are past examples of a successful petition effort that then invoked the need for an election, and at the time, the city commission identified the cost of that election, it just chose not to go forward. And so that petition doesn't necessarily preclude this approach.
That was my question right there, does that petition have any binding?
It was, they followed the process, and they were successful in preparing a petition that then caused the commission at the time to just kind of abandon the project. So part of, you know, in the interest of clarity for the neighborhood, and I think in the interest of the process not being any more difficult than it needs to be for you at the time, on the expectation that you received proposals and you have to review them and make a decision, I think the investment in terms of clarity about what you will and won't entertain, what you're trying to accomplish on the front end is probably worth it, both in terms of allaying any concern, or at least being clear with the neighborhood of what might be possible. And then you get clarity on the back end in terms of the proposals, and then as you're entertaining them, that's when I think the petition opportunity and the deadline starts to get involved. But I'm not sure to get all that done and run the petition process and then get adequate notice to the county for the November election, I'm concerned whether we can get all that completed by this fall. But part of that turns on the timing of how far in advance we have to file with the county.
Kind of sounds to me like we need a study session. I mean, I'm, I think I'm interested in making it fast-track, but in order to identify all the moving parts, yeah, we kind of have to sit down and know what all those are, I think.
I think it might be helpful to, and just, I agree, I think we need to study it in some kind of format, but I was even thinking as a discussion item during a city commission meeting, so that timing-wise, if there are, you know, neighbors that want to come and, you know, visit about what their vision for... neighbors that want to come and, you know, visit about what their vision for, for the neighborhood is so that we can maybe establish the likelihood for a more successful project. And if staff can give us, say, you know, specific questions that you need direction on, you know, we can give that some thought and, and, and give feedback on it. And it might help us to have just like a little bit of history about that area in terms of what's been proposed in the past and, and what hasn't, you know, what hasn't worked so that maybe we could try something different. And Lauren, you had a really, when we were talking about, I think, what it was about the plastic bags, you kind of laid forth a template for how you would go about, you know, doing that and the different things that you would work through. I mean, is, would this be a, a, a project that kind of calls for a, a similar approach? I mean, I, right now, I just feel like there's a lot of different directions and I think it's definitely something worth, you know, discussing and perhaps pursuing, but.
Yeah, our intent was, I mean, part of this is when to get on your schedule for study session. I'm looking at my boss because you guys have a lot of study sessions with budget right now. So it's, the timing couldn't be worse for study sessions. But, I mean, our approach was to probably do background, give you, you know, the set of these dates and some of these things that have brought us to fruition. And then to kind of outline what a project overview would look like for something like this, kind of like we did with plastic bags.
Right.
And then the third piece of that presentation is really decision-making points of, you know, some of these key elements that would be in an RFP and getting that direction so that we could draft that process if you chose to go in that direction.
Might just, just for suggestion, if we're going to solicit community input, might be worthwhile to have an evening session at Friendship Center. A lot of citizens complain they can't get here for a four o'clock meeting.
Right.
And, you know, I think it'd be better if we take this to the neighborhood in question, even if it's just an informational session. We can certainly do something here, but definitely set up something that would be more accessible to more of the, of the neighbors.
I love that idea. That's a great idea. So something that.
If we're going to do it quickly, then I, I think that's an option and/or do it in our regular public meeting under other business if, if we're going to, because our, our study sessions are pretty full.
The only analogy I can give is the number of meetings we had when we were trying to locate the dog park. All the neighborhoods have said, not here, not here, not here, I want it, but not here. I think this project would merit at least as much attention as a dog park.
So just to add something to the timing, I was just informed it takes 90 days to, we need to submit either petition or request by the county commission 90 days in advance of the election. So the general election this year, I believe, will be November 6th. So that puts us, you know, some time out, I think. So August, basically. So that means you have to know by August if you're going to have to do the petition and you won't know until 30 days after your adopted resolution and two postings in the paper.
Right. So if you add the 30, 90 days in advance of the November election takes you to August. And then if you add the 30 days to run the protest petition process, now you're into July. So that, that presumes that we've concluded the RFP process and, and we've reached some form of conclusion in terms of the project essentially the end of June. And I'm, I'm just not sure we can turn it that fast. I mean, the staff's, what we've done so far to staff it through has not been prepare a proposed RFP. It's been, let's start to strategize about if you wanted to entertain an RFP, how we'd help you develop that RFP.
Not to mention might be, might be kind of nice to know how we're going to pay for it. We have some budgetary issues too.
Don't, shouldn't be any expense to the city.
Well, as far as setting meetings and how many priorities.
I mean, I've got those kinds of actions in our operating budget and things like that. I mean, I guess budgetary things to think about is, you know, any type of legal costs that may come out of this or, you know, if we have to hold a special election, things like that.
Special election probably is the most likely expense that might be associated with this project.
I would, I would, and in a perfect world, I'd like to think that we put together a program that is advantageous to the neighborhood and we don't have to worry about a petition and worry about a special election.
That's a really good point.
And I think, so I think it's important that we tell, you know, we give the, that area or the community the direction we wish to head. I believe in past, there's been some misinformation given as to what was going to be put into some areas and I think has led to some, some neighbors being concerned about it. To me, we have infrastructure in place and, and I see Martha sitting there and I believe we have water and sewer that both will handle what we're looking, you know, single family or housing or duplexes or whatever there. You know, we talk about using our current infill, you know, it's, it's, it's basically been sitting there as a liability, the fact that we pay to have it mowed and not generating any property tax off of it. I know there's some individuals that, it, it has a great park. I mean, I, when we talk about connectivity, I think putting homes there that are up against the park is, is what we look to do with neighborhoods. And so we just need to, to make our, make a project that looks advantageous to, to the neighborhood that they'll see that it's actually a plus for them and not a, a negative.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really good point. The, and kind of the more time and energy we invest in, in specifying that vision on the front end, the better opportunity we have for success. And as a clarification, I don't think the vision is all, is at all turning over the entire park. There is, there's a lot of asset there that we would retain. It's trying to take advantage of that undeveloped space.
Yes, it's got a wonderful park there and, and, and again, part of that negotiations or discussions are, do we, you know, do we leave some of the vacant ground as potential expansion for the park? But there's still plenty of room there for, for developing. And, and we're at a point now that we need workforce housing. And that's, you know, that's why I think it's important that we, we look at it now and see if we can come up with something that'll, that'll work. And this is kind of a pilot program to me, that if we can make something work, then we can look to other neighborhoods. I mean, there's some other ground that we look to say, this does work and it'll help other developers look to do more infill, so.
So I guess I just need a little bit more direction then. Are we shooting for November or, and I do think this weren't some good conversation too, because the park's master plan actually has a design that takes up the whole park, but then the live Salina plan.
We have a housing program that says it's, I know, yeah.
Yeah, so it's quite, there's some differing views. So definitely feedback from the elected body on, on how, it's, it's usually like, I can take a plan and go, oh, this is what we've wanted to do. This is not as easy here.
And my, my deal now is, we're sitting here looking at budget issues and to add more park would be something we're not going to do for a long time. So the, the park plan to me, as far as expanding that park significantly, probably doesn't fall within our budget at this point.
You see all the issues we've not resolved. I, I don't see you fast-tracking this anywhere other than into the ground.
I forgot it was city government fast-tracking this stuff. We, we, we are not ready.
They have a week off, so maybe they can come back. Well, tell us how they've refined.
And, and I think, you know, something that Mr. Skregg said was important is, and even Lauren, if we do this right, hopefully we take out that concern of having to have an, you know, have it go on a ballot. So maybe, you know, I think taking our time and doing it correctly probably is the right thing, so.
Correctly has to involve that, the residents.
Right.
They've got to understand. From the beginning, not taking them a program or a project and saying, this is what we're going to do.
Right.
But they have to be in on the planning stage from day one.
Well, and I think that maybe the next logical step, I mean, like, like you mentioned, Mayor Davis and Commissioner Hay, would be, would it be possible to schedule a discussion item at the end of a city commission meeting and then adjourn to go over to like the Friendship Center, have our discussion onsite so that people would be able to participate after work and, and at least, you know, we kind of get a feel for where, for where the neighbors, yeah, for where the neighbors are at in terms of their concern.
I think that's definitely a possibility and I would add one step and that is prior to that, kind of bringing you a project plan of, if we're going to get from where we are to an RFP ready to distribute, here's what we see that looking like and it would include that step. But we probably need to have that conversation with you before we have a meeting scheduled to go to the, the neighborhood. And a little bit of additional lead time for you to just make sure we're all on the same page in terms of approach. And a quick early step in that's going to be engaging the neighborhood.
Well, and something we talked about in our earlier meeting, and I think from listening from you guys, we're probably on the right track, is we had thought, thought about doing a mailing to the neighborhood, just saying, we're talking about this. No decisions have been made, but we're welcoming you into the conversation and we want to hear your thoughts. And then creating just a base webpage that people can submit written comments on and kind of like I did for the downtown where I just put, you know, here's our objectives, here's our scope right now, here's some critical deadlines or, or meetings you may want to attend. And then we hook like the city's email notification to that. So if you're interested, each time we update the page, you'd get notified. So if you wanted to know more, and we could have that running up to when you guys do your study session on this. And it looks like probably the earliest would be like end of July. By the time you get through budgeting, we could be scheduled for that. And then following that, when we do project proposal in there, we'd have key public involvement opportunities that you guys could, could choose to go forward with. Would that work?
Well, I think what, kind of the feeling I'm getting is if we could get maybe some public input more to the beginning of the process, yeah.
If you're willing to discuss this in regular session, not study session, then I think that solves some of the timing. It, you know, accelerates the timing. So I think we could come back to you with greater detail than we have tonight. And then that would include a timeline, which would include the public participation on the front end.
Well, and if it might help, we could do a presentation and just kind of get all of this out there. And then I've seen where they've done like listening sessions. So before we draft the RFP, you do a listening session, you go and say, hey, if we're going to draft this, we've had this conversation, you guys would have had the background information and, and kind of know what some of those critical elements are before you have that public meeting. And then you can go and have that. And then, then you've kind of got both sides of it, right? All this background material and some of that public feedback. Then we get to the decision-making point where you're like, okay, staff, we've heard this, here's what we'd like our RFP to look like. Or we don't want to do that, or we do.
Right. Because I mean, I think what I'm getting at too is, you know, if, if it's the neighborhood in and of itself being against any development of that parkland whatsoever and there's going to be a petition filed regardless, I mean, I think that's an important piece of decision, of information for, for us to have to know whether we're going to try to, need to try to match this up with an election, you know. I think, I think that would be, would be helpful for, for us to, for us to know.
Yeah, I agree. The only reason I'm suggesting that's kind of a two-step process is on the assumption that staff needs to make a presentation at the community meeting. We want to make sure that the community, the presentation that's made is reflective of the input you give us. And if you've given us the input and we adjourn to go make the presentation, or we may be out of sync with you in terms of, you know, the background information and, and the presentation we make to the neighborhood. I think the first opportunity to make sure we're all on the same page, followed shortly thereafter with the presentation, the neighborhood's going to be the most reflective of the governing body's direction.
Well, I think if I were you guys, I'd want to go into that room knowing more about the whole situation. So having the chance to get you guys all that background information and those different components before you go into that meeting might make that situation a little bit more comfortable.
Or even before we have our final discussion amongst ourselves, just to know what the process is.
Yeah, definitely. And you know what I could put together for the next packet or the manager's report is kind of a bulleted outline of maybe now that we've had this discussion, I appreciate your feedback on what those next steps would be like, getting, getting to that, that question of, do you or do you not want to do an RFP? Thanks.
All right. Any other, other business?
As your, I've got one more thing. I hate slowing down. We were doing so well. As your representative to the arts and humanities, I'd like to mention the River Festival's coming up and there's probably 50 new acts that have never been here before. There's a new stage, a Bravo stage. They even have professionals this year for the face painting. So there's a lot going on, a lot of new artists and, and a lot of volunteer opportunities. I'm sure Brad Anderson would want me to mention that they can, got some great opportunities for families to help out over there. So get ready for the River Festival and get involved.
Thanks. And I guess he would also want you to add, don't share your button.
Oh, don't share the button.
Why your button? Don't share your button.
Not a nice, not a nice, nice thing.
Well, everybody, everybody's looking my way. I just, before I read my spiel about executive sessions, I guess, do we have specific things that we can't discuss out here in terms of the Expo Center lease? Or is this something that we can have a discussion about out here?
I was viewing it as a contract negotiation that probably merits a closed session discussion with attorney-client privileged information. The intention would be to confirm with you what we then might propose as a negotiating point with the county. But that's, you can always discuss anything you want in open session.
We could certainly discuss in open session after the executive session.
You could.
How long?
We're thinking 20 minutes.
All right. Mike, you got the clock?
Okay. I moved the city commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the subject of negotiations with Saline County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:27 PM.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.